Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the person purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public meeting. However, there is time provided for public participation during the meeting as indicated herein by law 0165.1B. It should be noted that the Board of Education receives their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they've had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. The Board will hold their next regular meeting Tuesday, December 17th, 2024, here in the Woodridge High School library. Guests and participants are asked to silence their cell phones and put them away for the duration of the meeting. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Heffernan? Mr. Carlo?
Here.
Mr. Leidig?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, I have no public participation. Get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Get a second. Roll call.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
And that brings us to superintendent reports.
All right. Well, I thought we'd start off talking about Senate Bill 29. That's been a hot topic for us. On October, I sent out the general monitoring notice on the 24th, and now our families are starting to get those 72-hour letters, which, depending on the situation, they could get multiple letters. So anytime there's an alert or something that triggers us to look at something they've done on a school-issued device, that enacts that letter. And unfortunately, there's no opt-out for families. So we are going to continue to explore less intrusive ways to communicate, but families can expect right now that they get email notification from us when these letters are coming out. So, and that's the student privacy legislation. Right now, they're supposed to, now that they're back in session, there is discussion. They understand that the way it was originally written is not the best, so they are going to be looking at that language. Hopefully, we'll see a change, but likely, it won't happen until January. And then other news, Timbertop, we are having our first community meeting this Thursday. This is for our Canyon Brook families that are impacted by the road closures there. So we put together a video, and we're going to send it out to all of our district families on Friday. The video features some of our administrators, our driver, our supervisor of transportation services, our very own Scott Carlo, speaking on behalf of the Board. So it's a really great video, just providing a visual of what we're facing, and then some safety tips for families to be aware of. Every one of our families has been communicated to in the Canyon Brook area by our building principals, so they spend a lot of time reaching out to nearly 140 families that are impacted in that area. So we're hoping we get a good turnout this Thursday and then next Thursday. If they're not able to be there in person, we're also going to be communicating in emails, phone calls, to make sure everybody knows what our plan will be. It's unfortunate, because it's inclement weather, that we may not know until the morning of if we can make it down or not. So I know Rob's working really hard to make sure that all of our families have the app, so they can get those updates as soon as we receive them. So that's happening this Thursday, and then December 4th is the second meeting. And then, turning it over to something really exciting, I'm going to invite Tina Hastings, our supervisor of food service at the top, to talk to you about how we grow lettuce at the elementary school and our hydroponic tower.
Thank you. We have taken on a project at an elementary school where we have a growing community in Woodridge. And what we did, I'm going to talk about a little bit about Meat Fork Farms. This is the tower that we brought in, how the process and the ease of what we're doing and the benefits of why we're doing this. So first of all, I met this wonderful woman at the Sonic Partners event about, in their own, Our Fork Farms is the name of their company. And they've been awarded different things with innovation, all about bringing agriculture into the schools and working directly with schools. They're actually the only company like this that is actually credited for what they do, so we can bring an extension to the classroom, so we can bring the information that they do into our classrooms, and they are actually credited for it. So the school district, if they were to go in and do this, they could get accreditation from the agriculture company. But this is a little bit about what they do, about what they're, why do we go with them? They have a website called FarmTIP, where they connect us directly in the schools with local farmers to talk about their products. They have curriculum that we give out to the teachers as well, and this is what the towers look like. So what happened was when I met this, I went into a district, and I seen this one in the districts, and it was amazing. I fell in love. How do we get this in Woodridge? So last year, they had a DW, a farmer's school grant that they hosted, and said, hey, all you guys looking to do local, why don't you sign up for this week? Well, this will be great. So I filled out for the grant, had whole programs that, you know, steps starting from the elementary to the middle to the high school. Probably great, and I got to turn it down. Wasn't happy about it, but it's okay. It happens. So the one furthest on the left is the tower that we got. Because of the Sonic Partners, they get, we're in this AMC in Boston, and they were offered $1,000 discount if they bought one of the towers. So my boss calls me and says, hey, you know, would you like this $1,000 grant? Of course we do. So I went to Tom and Nicole and said, hey, is it possible we can do this? One of the benefits of where we are now financially and food services, we have a little bit of extra money that we can spend. So we said, okay, they allowed me to do this, so we got the tower. And this is what it is. It all starts with a tower. It's just a hydroponic tower. It's made up of PVC piping. There is water that flows throughout the entire thing, so very limited work. The ladies, truly, all they're doing is twice a week checking the water, making sure that our pH balance is correct. They're planting, and then we harvest. And in 28 days, it starts, it all starts with this, we just started. It takes eight to 10 days to get the seeds to grow. Then we put it into the towers. So within 28 days, we go from just a little seedling to a full-grown tower of lettuce. And this is our bound to full harvest. So within 28 days, all of this lettuce went in, or the ladies take maybe 15, 20 minutes throughout the week to do it. And then on the 28th day, we were able to harvest it. And it's all grown by water. There's a light that goes up throughout the tower, so it's on a timer, literally runs 18 hours a day. So that's all that's doing it, and the water just keeps coming through. The ladies have to pull the holes every once in a while to make sure that we do have hard water here. So that is one of the unfortunate things, so we do have to put a little bit extra chemicals in there and all of that. But this was our bound to full harvest that we did. We got, in the very first one we did, we had 205 lettuce servings of salad that we were able to do with our first. So now, if you know anything about our lettuce, you know salads, sometimes not the greatest thing when you're getting them from the store. So it was great to be able to actually see it in person with the kids trying it for the first time. Along with the lettuce, we did romaine and star lettuce, and we also did basil. So that's where I brought the crazy salads today, because we use the fresh basil that we actually grew in our kitchen. The students came in, they went through tours, they had to see. It was very neat to see the excitement on their faces. They came through to watch these towers being, you know, the lettuce grown, so they were able to watch it little by little, as it grew from the little seedling to the large bounty that we got. And as we did this, it all starts with our champion. So when I came and thought about doing this, if I haven't got my staff on board, if my staff's not willing to do this, then, you know, it's kind of a bust. So luckily, we are very blessed here at Woodridge. I will tell you, our food service ladies are willing to do anything I ask them, so I'm very thankful for that. But we have, at the elementary school, we have Lisa Seitz, who is the manager there, and Rea Presto, and she is the one that's kind of doing all the work in the backgrounds. But they take the kids in, they show them, they interview, and then on the far left, that was two of the ladies from Pork Towers, and then our Jess Stone, who is our middle school manager. And if any of you know, I'm sure everybody in the district knows Jess. She is above, she goes above and beyond at all times. So even though she didn't get her tower, she was still willing to come over to the elementary, help us do a little bit of work, and see what it is in hopes that one day we will get her a tower. So it does, they do a lot of, a lot of great things over there. So why is this tower important for us? There is better products for our students to eat, sustainability, and the growth to extend, again, extension of the classroom. We want our cafeterias to be able to be brought into the classrooms and see what we do. So these are just a couple of little things we talk about for sustainability, you know, it's less waste. The product is going to last longer. When we harvest the lettuce out of the tower, that can go three to four weeks, as long as we don't break the bulb. So if you've ever had living lettuce, if you've ever brought the living lettuce out of home, that's basically what we're doing now. We have these bulbs, and it'll last three to four weeks. First harvest didn't last us two days, because the kids were so excited about the salads, they ate like 180 salads, like, within the first two days. So, but it also is a cost saver, you know? What normally, if I were to buy our produce from our vendors, and we get the lettuce, and it costs about 32 cents to make a side salad. By us using our lettuce, which is fresh, can't get any fresher, 12 cents. So the same size serving, so I am a bit of a, I'm sure I do tend to watch where my money goes very well. So that is one of the benefits of having this. The kids loved it. The first day we brought them, we harvested, we took it out and let the kids just try the lettuce first, you know, see what it's like, tried it next to the romaine that was in the back. What do you think? What is the difference? And I don't know if you've ever done it, but it was amazing. Even myself, I was like, oh my goodness, you know? It was amazing, the difference that you can tell in the there, in between the two lettuces. So the kids loved it. Then the next day, we brought out the side salads for the children to use. And these are elementary students that were like, ooh, and he's dying over the window, you know, oh my gosh, it's beautiful. So for an elementary student to notice this was very, very exciting to see. And then it's also, again, now, as the teachers, we've spoke with many of the teachers at the elementary school, and some of them are willing to take the curriculum into the classroom. So they're going to take this, they brought their kids down for their tours, and we're going to concentrate right now on the fourth and fifth graders, just so that they get it to, again, first time we did this, we weren't sure how it was going to go. It worked very well. So fourth and fifth grade teachers are going to be able to take curriculum back into their classroom, and they're going to be able to do, and there's just a few of the different lessons that they will be able to bring in and show, and it's going to help us along the way. Now, my goal is to move the tower into each row, into each level, so each building. So as a middle school level, I've spoken to teachers there, and we have thought about doing it still in the cafeteria, but bringing some of the students in and helping do the harvesting, helping doing the planting. Then I'm hoping by the time we get to the high school, I spoke with Ms. Novak, and special needs students have already said, hey, they're on board. If we have one there, they would be the ones kind of doing all the work, and we would get the reap benefits of the harvest. So we can turn around and sell it, you know, and put it out on the kids' meals. And there is a benefit to it. Again, and I will tell you, my husband's a bit of a, oh, I can do that. So after I showed him this tower, he's like, oh my gosh, we could probably still build this. And I'm like, oh. So the benefit is, I'm thinking with all the classes that we do have, and there may be a class of these kids to look at this and say, wait a minute, we can build this. How can they save me $5,000 for each shower? And if they could do it, you know? So there is a way we can pull these into the classrooms, and possibly, they can help us. And it's, it is nice to see, once the kids do it with their own hands, they're much more excited. They're so excited to see it, they're a part of it. We've done this in different other projects, and once those kids help work with us, and they see it, oh man, I did that. You know, so that's where we're kind of hoping, again, starting at the little kids, we're always best to do that, because by the time these kids, and that's what my hope is, by the time these elementary school students are in the high school, they will be, hey, I want to get on board, and I want to be that one that's helping do this stuff, because they've seen it as they've grown along the way. And then, of course, this is our main reason why we do it, our little happy customers, you know? If we look at those faces, when you see those faces, you just want to do whatever you possibly can to make them happy. And so that's, that's why we do what we do. Again, I do have a plan, and we do hope that we can move forward on the road with this. But anyone who has any questions, I thank you for listening about it. I'm very excited about this, and it was great to see the staff every week on board. As soon as I called Tom, I was like, hey, this is so cool. So it is something different. Not a lot of districts are doing this around us, so we are one of the first, kind of cool as I. So I'm very excited to see how far we can take it.
And it's, it's exciting to see.
I will say one thing, our elementary ladies, after we did the first harvest, they're like, we want a second one. So it's like, how do we get the second one? So they're already, my worst fear was they're going to destroy our work, we're not going to do this, we don't want to do this. But they're already saying, hey, we want a second one. So it is going to be great.
It's exciting to see so many kids eating salad. Yeah, that is really good to see.
Yeah, from my public health background, it's very exciting to see a program like this, to get kids to eat healthy food.
And that was a nice thing, we put it out on social media. We've been sending everything to Nick as we go, you know? Each week, they, we took pictures as they grew, and he put it out there. And that's the buzz. I mean, we were, I was amazed how many people responded to the posts, you know, to see that, and not just my staff workers, you know, not just our kitchen workers, or just the workers in this district. It was nice to see parents that are after, oh my gosh, this is really great.
And do the kids know we have agricultural program?
I don't know if they do, at that elementary, so that's, that's, and I truly didn't know going into high, if the high schools did, and that's where my thought would be, I'd love to be able to get that in there.
Yeah, my daughter does it, but most of it's growing, and everything happens at the falls.
So now, we could be doing it here. And that's what, I will tell you, we are starting, like, we started off with the lettuce, because we weren't sure how long it was going to take to do it, because it is 28 days. But in January, we're going to start with peppers, mini peppers, cucumbers, and tomatoes that will be growing in the tower. We can also do figgerings, we can do strawberries, and, you know, at one point. So we started with the lettuce, they're excited, the ladies are really, that's why they're like, well, we need a second one, because we need one for the lettuce and one for the, you know, the fruiting flowers, the fruiting vegetables. So they're excited, we're very excited for this one, but they take a little bit longer, the vegetables do. But again, these are all vegetables that these kids eat every single day, and they see it, and now it's coming directly from them. And I mean, it just is, it is an amazing program that we're starting, and we've been, we've been talking, you know, we do a lot of local, I don't know if you guys know that, we do do a lot of local. We try to support as much as we can. We use, like, our Dogos, who is a local vendor, our Snack and Waffles, you know, that we use as, make right in Hudson. We, so we are bringing a lot of local, our produce is coming from the farmers around us, so that is a big part of our program. So this was why we did try to do this, because we do want it out there.
Thank you, Tina. Hey, Mr. D, want to come up for a student presentation? Our recognition is our high school, a couple of high school students tonight.
Thank you. Come on up, Tyra and Sujud. Come on up here. Yep. Thank you. So this is Tyra Rezai, and this is actually Sujud Tahaa, who is Sarah's sister. Sarah's currently at Kent State in a class, so she was unable to make it, which is part of the reason why we're here. This conversation about student recognition started with Allison Schneider, Science Department head and I. We were talking about the curriculum, and we were talking about the process of, you know, as a ninth grader makes it through the 12th grade, and what classes they take, and how that works. You'll hear more about that next time we talk about curriculum. But normally, a ninth-grade student starts in physical science and then moves on to biology and then geology, and then that's, that's the standard route. And sometimes, the other students, honors students move on to honors biology, honors chem, and AP, you know, that's the path, too. So we were talking about the curriculum, and I started talking about, you know, students who are, who are special in that, in that respect, right? Students, students of science. And then we started talking about, you know, Tyra, and we started talking about Sarah. And the conversations started to grow, and then teachers started talking, and I thought, what a perfect opportunity, then, once we found out a little bit more about the background of these two, just how special this process or this, this path was from eighth grade on to right now. So it's going to be kind of incredible when you hear it. So they're, these are two special young women, truly. So in eighth grade, they came to us. We'll start with Sarah, Sujud, Sarah's sister. And eighth grade came to us, spoke limited English, and started actually in WVA and worked with Mrs. Keys at the time, in our English second language program, English for speakers of other languages. And she came to us as a, as a limited speaking English speaker. And then after eighth grade, and that was online during COVID, and eighth, ninth grade came in and started regular in physical science and normal, you know, ninth grade classes. At that point, moved into her sophomore year and then jumped right into honors biology. So moved from a, just physical science to honors bio. And then moved, and then in her junior year, one of 12 students selected for the sixth district compact biotech program, which, as you know, is a highly competitive program, and there was, you know, we have very few, you have very few students from all districts get in, because it's difficult. So at that point, she was there, and then in her senior year, she's a Level 2 student and currently in a bio research group at Kent State, which is where she is tonight. With that, though, in her 12th grade year, she decided to take honors physics as well. So she has, you know, both biotech and honors physics, and then along with that is in another KSU program. And Dave Weaver decided, was, just when he started talking about Sarah, he was like, you know, and actually Tyra, both were like, this is incredible. And he said this about Sarah, incredibly hard worker, in and out of the classroom, does a little extras to ensure, always striving to be the best person she can be. In addition, a superb team player when she works in a laboratory. So that's Sarah, and we'll talk more about how that connects. And let's talk about Tyra right now. So also, Sarah came to us from Sudan. And just as a point of reference, Tyra came to us from Iran through Turkey, which, you know, are 1,800 miles apart, you know, just as a point of reference. So she started with us during COVID as well, learned English online, and then started in physical science and moved directly to honors biology, took another path, and went on to honors chemistry. And then in her, you know, now in her senior year, she's taking AP bio and honors physics together. So along with that, I talked to Mrs. Marsh, her CCP teacher, she's in college writing, CCP college writing, and then also in AP art. Mrs. Marsh says, Tyra has consistently demonstrated remarkable ability to analyze and interpret higher-level text and produce writing that is both insightful and polished. Her dedication to her education is inspiring. Her cumulative GPA is a 4.3, and she plans on maybe heading to the University of Cincinnati to become a heart surgeon. Both want to become doctors. So as I was thinking about this, I thought, you know, why not take a, you know, a little bit of a snapshot of, you know, Woodridge Way, we're working on a portrait of a graduate. I mean, if there's anything better than this moment right now, talking about two young girls starting in eighth grade, relatively, you know, quiet, non-speaking English girls who make it up all the way through our program, and they deal with all the different educators who we have, supportive family, and then, you know, and my friends, too, and then also ended up leaving here in this year, in class of 25, moving on to college and potentially becoming doctors. I was like, and that's, those are two incredible stories, who came from two different, very, very different places. So I just thought, you know, when we're talking about the Woodridge, right, this is a great example of it, or these two are a great example of it. And also, as we work on a district initiative, Portrait of Graduate, this is a good example, too, of we better be able to use many of the qualities that these two have in order to, you know, kind of capture what we want when we graduate seniors. So that's the story. Two super, super kids. Heck of a story.
We have some certificates for you, and then if you could bring our photo.
Wow.
Pretty amazing. Thank you, Mr. D.
Yeah, that's amazing.
I also want to recognize somebody, and I'm just going to embarrass you for a second, Michelle. If Michelle Baker could just raise her hand. So Michelle is a parent in our district, and she also works at Neonet, and she's working on a really special project right now. She's heading up donations at Neonet, she's working with Caitlin Sabo and our counseling department, and they're serving 25 of our families in the turkey dinners for Thanksgiving, and they're also stocking our food pantry. So we're just really grateful for that support, and while she was here, wanted to take an opportunity to recognize her. So thank you, Michelle, for that. And, and this is typically the time in our meeting where we take a five-minute recess. We know our families are really busy, so if you wanted to leave, there is no judgment. You can go, there'll be five minutes for that, but you're also more than welcome to stay if you'd like to do that.
All right. And then we'll move us to number four, the treasures report.
So.
Mr. Morris.
Save that for later. So because of the forecast coming up, I don't have a lot to say tonight, other than just a couple of things. Through the first third of the year, our expenses are up 9%, revenues are up 12%, so it's always a good thing. But again, that was plain, so it's really nothing out of the ordinary, which is a good thing. I do want to comment a couple of things, though. We don't always comment on some of the donations we receive, but I think this time it's kind of warranted. First thing I always want to do is recognize Debbie Campbell and Kristy Freed, because they wrote a couple of Donors Choice grants that we refunded for classroom supplies for themselves down at the elementary. Also, our Boy Scout troop donated some money towards our food pantry. The Woodridge Service Organization donated some funds to FCCLA, Drama Club, National Honor Society, and ASL Club. And the big one I want to mention is George and Terry Connor, local residents, longtime supporters of this district, donated, assuming you approve it here coming up soon, $10,000 towards the help of putting out our new baseball scoreboard. So very appreciative of what they've been able to do to help this district. Like I say, they've, they've been longtime supporters. The only last thing I want to mention is, you know, you just heard Tina talking a few minutes ago, with her and the Sonic Partners, what they've done for our food service program is, is beyond reproach. They just went through an audit, and food service audits, as soon as I hear audit, I'm thinking, oh boy, audit, here it comes. But food service audits are quite different than ours, you know? It's not just financials, a lot of things that they go through with them, but, and I'm not really going to get into the audit, because we really haven't talked to Tina, but she did share something with us that, that the auditors wrote for them, and it's this, "Woodridge Elementary School is running a successful food service program. This is evidenced by high participation in both students and staff. The staff cares for the students' health and well-being by serving tasty meals with a smile and words of encouragement. Thank you for your dedication to serving the students exemplary meals." So I just wanted to personally congratulate Tina and Maureen Fataonic for what they've done for our, our kids and our food service program. It's well deserved, so I just wanted to shout out, thank you. Mr. President, that's all I have for you.
All right. Get a motion to approve the treasures report. I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Moves us on to five. Board of Education reports, correspondence and updates, and committee reports. Have anything?
We have a lot this week.
This week?
Yeah.
Okay. Talk about that. Next meeting. Anything else? I don't have anything for the foundation at this point, at the moment. All right. Moves us to six. Consent resolution, 1 through 11, can I get a motion, please?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Glover?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Leidig?
Aye.
Moves us to seven. Personnel, a administrative contract. Kathryn Buchek, people service coordinator. I'll move.
Second.
Discussion.
So we have had a large increase in our special education numbers, and adding these additional days will help support those caseload demands and communication with the department.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
B, certificated staff, one through six. Get a motion, please. Second. I'll second. Discussion.
So just a couple items to highlight. First, Julie Cole has been a longtime teacher in our district. She's served Woodridge for many years and has had a big impact on the district. So we wish her well in the next chapter as she retires and does something else. Also, there is the long-awaited Science of Reading list of all of the teachers that are required to take the Science of Reading training. So as they complete that work, they'll be able to turn in their certificates of completion and then get paid. And that's something that we are supposed to get reimbursed for through the Department of Education and Workforce. And then just one other item is our mentoring program. This is, Christine Sterling is going to be a mentor to a new teacher we're going to have at the middle school in, in reading, and it's just a great program to really help those new people coming into our, our district.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Brings us to C, classified staff, one through 10. Make it a motion, please.
I'll move.
Get a second. Discussion.
Just a couple items here to note. Chatwaite was a driver for us, and he would like to move into the sub role to have some more flexibility. So great drivers, we're happy to have him be able to step into that role. And then really excited to recommend an assistant mechanic to take over for Jeff Jackson. This is an alum, Matthew Horick. He is really excited about the position. He comes to us with a lot of knowledge, working for the Kahaga Valley Railroad, a lot of knowledge in preventative maintenance, diesel trains, air brake systems, which are all really important to working on our fleet of buses here. He also is very excellent with technology, so I know Rob is really excited to see how that advances the department. That's all I have there.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Brings us to D, supplemental contracts, one and two. I will move. Discussion.
These are for our certified and non-certified winter sports. One item, just to draw your attention to, is we did it backwards. So last month, we approved, or we recommended, you approved Teresa Novak for the winter, fall manager, or winter manager, and now we're approving the fall. She's doing all of the work, but just, just backwards there.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Eight recommendations. A, district calendars, 2025, '26, and '26, '27 school years. Get a motion, please.
I'll move.
Second. Discussion.
I'm afraid to even say the word calendar in front of some of the people in this room after much deliberation on this topic and factors to consider such as compact, athletics, professional development, workdays, student hours, not starting so early, facilities, projects. We have finally come to consensus on the next two years and able to bump that start date out a little bit, just by a week, but at least it's better than starting on the 11th, so.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Excuse me, aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
B, Summit Educational Service Center Agreement for Portrait of a Graduate Services, 2024, 2025 school year. I will move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I'm really excited about this work that we're about to embark on. We had members from our district leadership team come together and interview three different facilitators, and the team believed that Jeff Ferguson from the Summit Educational, Educational Service Center would really be able to help lead us in that work and those discussions. So it's really important work to define what a graduate in Woodridge is, and we're really excited to get to work on all of that. Some more information to come.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Mr. Dean.
C, Faith Islamic Academy, First Security Services of Ohio. Get a motion, please. Discussion.
So Faith Islamic Academy wants to use our auxiliary funds for security services, and that's the company they found they want to use for security services. And just as a reminder, we are a fiscal agent for auxiliary services for not only Faith Islamic, but Summit Christian School also. So these funds are not Woodridge, they're on our books, but they're not Woodridge funds. They're not Woodridge tax dollars, and it's truly Faith Islamic Academy's money and their request to use this.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
D, Summit Christian School PSI Agreement. I will move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So just like you approved, just there with Faith Islamic, Summit Christian School is utilizing health services through PSI. It's nursing and a health assistant, and that's what this agreement is for.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
E, ABA Outreach Services Contract Addendum, 2024, 2025 school year. You get a motion, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
This is just to add additional services for a student that needs more intensive intervention.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Brings us to F, LLA Therapy Agreement, 2024, 2025 school year. Get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Get a second. Discussion.
This is for OT and PT services for a student that's outplaced.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
G, Everyday Teacher Substitute Rate. I will move. Discussion.
There hasn't been a half-day rate for everyday subs, so this is just to include that half-day rate for when they can only be with us for half-day instead of the full day.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Brings us to nine, finance. A, purchase order. I will move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So previously, the board approved an agreement with the ESC of Northeast Ohio, basically for hearing services for students that we might have. And while we had the contract, we didn't get the purchase order for the beginning of the year, so that's what this represents.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
B, van purchases. Get a motion, please? Discussion.
So we have a couple of school vans that we bought, I don't know, about five years ago, very cheaply, and they are on their last leg for us to be able to use them. You can stick your fingers through part of the metal. And Rob has been working with Ohio Schools Council, because they do our bidding for us when we're purchasing buses and our school vans and things like this. So this resolution authorizes us to purchase a new school van for $88,426 from Cardinal Bus Sales. So upon this approval, we'll be able to purchase that, and I think Mr. Williams will be quite the happy camper.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
C, inventory disposal. In motion, please?
I'll move.
Second. Discussion. Arm wrestle.
So we have a wrestling mat that we bought a number of years ago, and if you know anything about wrestling mats, they don't come in one piece, they're coming in multiple pieces, basically usually three pieces. And when we bought this one, we thought it was top way to use it. It came with Velcro and everything, but the Velcro doesn't stick anymore. The mats are uneven, it's more of a safety hazard. They're not as thick as they used to be, so it's almost like kids are like falling onto the ground instead of a mat. So Mr. Mayor, Athletic Director, came and said, you know, we need to get rid of it. So this is why I'm asking your authorization to remove it from inventory.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
D, sale of assets. I will move. Get a second. Discussion.
So two resolutions ago, you authorized the purchase of a new school van. I talked about the two school vans that we currently have, and they really aren't usable for us anymore. The company we're purchasing from Cardinal Bus Sales were offering us $1,000 apiece. However, we do have a person in the community that is willing to offer us $1,500 each, because they do some side business on their own with catering and different things, and they're going to be able to fix up and use it for that. Not transporting students or people or anything, but just what they want to use it for. So since they're offering cat, or Mr. Bisswaz is offering cash more than what we give you credit for, I'm asking the board to approve this resolution so we can make everyone happy.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
E, drama on play, propose, and goals. Get a motion, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
So last month, we approved all our purpose and goals, and we missed one getting it to the board. So this is just a straggler that I'm just asking for your approval with their budget and purpose and goals that they've submitted.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Glover.
Aye.
Mr. Laddick.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
All right. Brings us to F, the five-year forecast.
Okay. So you have your booklets in front of you, if you want to follow along with me, follow them in there, what have you. I've got in there the forecast, a summary of the forecast, along with the notes that go along with it, our levy information, and the actual copy of the presentation itself. So we're just going to kind of jump into things here. As you know, we have to do this twice a year, the initial one's in November, we have a follow-up in May. So what we're going to discuss right here is these lines. The blue line represents our revenue, the red line represents our expenditures, and the green line represents our cash. So when I showed this this morning to administration, they're like, whoa, that's a big gap right there. And because of that, you can see what's happening with our cash balance right here. Okay? So now the good thing is, this forecast goes through fiscal year '29. We are cash positive at the end of cash, or at the end of fiscal year '29. Obviously, things can always change, okay? But right now, we are cash positive through there. But when you look at this, our average growth, again, when you see the red line going up and the blue line going down, our, the average growth in expenses is a little over 4%. The average growth in revenue is decreasing by over 1%. So that's almost a 6% difference, it's like 5.5% difference. So this is why you see the green line going down, this trend, and you'll see it throughout the forecast. Oh, I'm sorry. One thing we, what this is showing is next year, we are projected right here to start deficit spending. Hopefully, we are at this year, but next year, we're starting deficit spend. That's not a good thing, okay? And as you deficit spend, as you can see, that deficit's growing more and more. And again, we'll talk about more as we go into. Let's talk about revenue, okay? The biggest thing for the revenue is we're at the end of the biennial budget. It's a two-year budget cycle. We're at the end of it. The past four years, they've instituted the Fair School Funding Plan, okay? So when they instituted the Fair School Funding Plan four years ago, what, at the time, in the Fair School Funding Plan, they said fiscal year '21, we will not receive anything less than what we received in fiscal year '21. That's in law, okay? That was four years ago. Then this current two-year budget cycle, they actually made the funding level, we wouldn't, they guaranteed we wouldn't receive anything less than fiscal year '23, which is a good thing. Problem is, we don't know what's going to happen next year. We don't know, first off, if they're going to adopt the Fair School Funding Plan. If they do, at what percentage? What level will they do it at? We just don't know yet, okay? They said when they originally adopted it, it would take six years to fully fund it. So they started at 16%, 33%, and so forth. If they continue on the path of the way it's been funded, next year it should be funded at 83%, and then in fiscal year '27, 100%. But again, we just don't know. We don't know what's going to come in the biennial budget. Prior to fiscal year '22, when they adopted it, we're what's called a capped district. So if you recall, any, when they, when every district starts out as a formula district, they calculate your funding on a formula basis. But what happens is, when they first started calculating that for us, the revenues we would get were pretty good, but we were capped. We couldn't receive any more than 3% we did the year before, so it limited us in growth horribly. Then, starting with the new Fair School Funding Plan, we became a guaranteed district. So remember what I said? They guaranteed we wouldn't get anything less than fiscal year '21, and then '23. So we were guaranteed. So the new Fair School Funding, the actual funding piece of it, didn't bring us any additional money. So we were guaranteed up to fiscal years '21 and '23. It was a guarantee they gave us. Where the Fair School Funding helped us was taking away some of the expenses, like the money that would go to, when we had open enrollment kids leaving us, or when they, students would go to community schools. That money used to come directly out of our budget. It doesn't anymore. That's where Fair School Funding Plan helped us. But the, the revenue side hasn't until this year, okay? I told you in May that it was projecting we were becoming an actual formula district. And with the new enrollment that just hit in October, we have now become a formula district, which is a good thing. Now, is it giving a lot more money? No. But we are getting above the guarantee. Now, that can change throughout the year depending on what our enrollment, because it changes every month. So, but right now, we are a formula district. The Fair School Funding Plan is working, okay? One thing that always hurt us is our state share. We are considered a rich district because of the property taxes, I mean, excuse me, the property valuations that we have, we're considered high property value versus the number of students that we have. So our state share is 10%. Actually, the way the calculations come out, we're below 10%. But what they put in the last budget is no one could go below 10%. So we're bottom of the barrel for our state share. So basically, every $1 that the formula says we should get, we only get 10 cents on the dollar. In the forecast, you'll see, we do have one renewal levy in this forecast. Now, that renewal levy is going to come up in '27, so we're about every three years, okay? If you recall, the last two years, we had renewal levies in our community, passed them, they were very supportive of us, always very appreciative. But you know what happened in 2023 when they did the training update, and everyone's property values went up 20, 30%, right? So in '26, they do what's called a reappraisal. That's where they physically go out and look at every single home. They're supposed to, anyway, that's what they say. Whether they do or not, I don't know. But supposedly, they look at every single home in the county, okay? And this is done statewide, just on different years. So it's potentially, you know, if you think about a home that actually went up 30%, it's potential they could come out and say, you know what? That went up so much, it really isn't worth as what we have it on the books. It's potential that they could come down. Now, most homes, will that happen? No, obviously not. But that potential does exist. The problem is, right about when we have our next renewal levy, '26, '27, that's, so they'll do the reappraisal in '26 to be effective for the '27 tax year. So it's something we have to keep in mind, is our next renewal levy is coming at the same time as the reappraisal in Summit County. So we talk about our levies. We have four levies out there that are renewable, our four emergency levies. Here's the one in '27, that's right here when that reappraisal is going to happen, okay? We have one coming in 2030, like we say, every three years. The yellow is when the levy runs out, we lead to look to renew it. These are the two we just passed, ten-year renewals in '23 and '24, so they're going to go through '33 and '34. I mentioned it last May, and it's something I think I recommend we start to look at, is you can do some things, you can start to combine levies. You know, we've had voter fatigue out here. People are tired of, you know, you go to the ballot, it's Woodruff on the ballot again. So it's something we might have to look at, because particularly, when you look at this one, it's a one-point-formal levy now, so by 2030, it could be less than one mill. So that may be something, as we start to get down the road here a couple of years, that may be something the board wants to look at, possibly combining some levies. So when we look at the revenue, we are, and it's our same old story, our real, our local money funds almost eighty-five percent of our funding. In state, we only get a little over fifteen percent of our funding. The pie chart is one way to show it, but this one really hits at home. The blue is the local funding, and the state is the red funding. One thing, I mean, it just, it just really makes it much more clear. You will start to see the local funding going down, that's because we have a renewal levy in there. I can never assume that the renewal levy is going to pass. So I have to put it in the forecast, I assume that it won't until it does.
Do those numbers reflect with an assumption that they're going to continue to fund the Fair School Funding Plan, or?
We are, I have it flatlined, but I just don't know.
Based on what we get now?
Yes, yes. Because I don't want to assume more and wind up not getting, so we flatline what we're going to get.
And we, just to reiterate, we have no idea what they're going to do.
No, we don't. And do I feel good that they're going to pass it? I'm hoping so, but I really don't know. You know, there's a lot of people that still don't like it, because they think they put too much money in schools. We've seen what's happened, you know, with the vouchers and so forth, that's where they want to put a lot of the money. They put a lot of money into private schools, I meant to, oops. They put a lot of money into private schools now into facilities. They're giving money for private schools to build their own facilities. We couldn't get any money as a public school. You know, the old OFCC, we'd be way down the bottom, because again, we're considered a rich district. But they're giving it to private schools. So I don't know what's going to happen. I hope that they're going to continue to pass it. I have a feeling they will, I really do, but we don't know. And again, at what level? Will they fund it at eighty-three, a hundred percent?
Right.
Where will the guarantees be? Will it be back to '21, '23, hopefully up to '25? We don't know. It's all, and hopefully, we find out by the end of June. Couple of years ago, about six years ago, we didn't find out until July. They didn't settle it until July. So they had to do a temporary to start funding things July 1. All right, so let's talk about our expenses. This is the biggest thing I want to talk about, is we've talked about ESAR's gone, it's done, okay? So we had six staff members that were paid out of ESAR funds, okay? So this number, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, that represents their salaries and fringe benefits that now our general fund has to absorb, okay? So we did a lot of good things with that, but ESAR's gone. ESAR helped us immensely with our bottom line, but it's gone. Virtual program, WVA, okay, our Virtual Academy, costs us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with Jefferson to run that program for us. Yes, we have our own staff member, but the curriculum and everything that goes with it has a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Again, ESAR, it was paid out of ESAR, it's coming back to the general fund. Building substitutes, Wally Davis, right when COVID was starting, he had the foresight, because we used to have like one, I call them permanent regular building sub per building. And when he saw this coming, we started paying a couple of staff members more, a couple of substitutes, so that we had extra permanent subs in the building before other districts gobbled them up. We paid for that out of pandemic funds. That's gone. And the building subs, we don't have enough subs as it is. So the funds that we had are going to be, again, absorbed by the general fund, because we need it. We need to have those substitutes. Additional teaching staff for this year. We added a computer science teacher here in the high school. One thing we're always monitoring, intervention specialists. Intervention specialists, our special needs population keeps growing, so we've added intervention specialists this year, and it's something we just, we're going to have to keep monitoring as we go, but we've added that this year. Speaking of adding, we're, in this forecast, we're allowing for one additional staff member, one additional teacher, and every year, '26 through '29 for enrollment needs, for two reasons, okay? I just talked about our special needs. Our special needs population keeps growing, okay? So we have to keep monitoring that. The other thing, and I'll talk about more about later, we've talked about it some over this past year, is the Schumacher Merriman Valley Master Plan, combination between Akron and Cogga Falls. There's a lot of talk about there what they're going to do. Now, it's a few years down the road, but we don't know, okay? Could be more population, because Akron keeps, one of the things they keep talking about is affordable housing. So if they build places to bring more families in, that's more students that are going to come to us. So it's something we keep monitoring, you know, for enrollment needs. That's why we built in one teacher additional each year. We hope we don't have to use it, but we've got a lot for it. Science of Reading, we just approved the Science of Reading stipends this year. This is going to cost us a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in salaries. Now, again, the state's reimbursing us, but it's not going to come this year. So I've got to vary it, how much we think it's going to get this year versus next year. The whole hundred and thirty thousand will be paid out this year. Staff has to complete it by June 30th or '25. Most of them are going to be done by December, but it is built into the forecast. Health insurance, or we took a big increase this year, seventeen point three percent between medical and dental. I also had ten percent increases built in each year. I know that where our insurance consortium has been operating the past few months, I'm hoping that ten percent is enough. It's been a rough year, but it's been a rough couple of years, and that's why we're seeing those big increases. We're always looking at safety measures. So, you know, unfortunately, schools are under the, I don't want to say under the gun, schools are under, you know, there's a lot of things happening that we really have to look at safety measures, okay? So we've got some things built in there, starting next year, to add some additional safety for the district. This is the program we just started this summer, the Digitizing Project. It's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar project, it's going to take about four years to pay off, or five years, I'm sorry. So we're paying about forty thousand dollars per year to get all these records cleaned up and digitized, and so we can make things much better. Expenditures, okay, this is one thing we always look at. How are we, spending-wise, what do we spend on the money out? So you can see wages and benefits account for about seventy-seven percent of all of our expenditures. Now, as I call it, the Mendoza Line, what you always, you grade yourself as eighty percent. Worst service industry. As I always tell people, we don't make widgets. We don't have money tied up into supplies or inventory. It's all in personnel. Not all, but you know, most of it, okay? So you always look at that eighty percent. If you get, if you're above eighty percent, that's when you start to look at things. If you're below eighty percent, all right, you're doing okay. When the Fair School Funding Plan first hit and took away some of those expenditures, our wages and benefits were above eighty percent. So now we're below. So does that mean our salaries and wages are going down? Of course not. What that means is, some of these other services are getting more expensive. I think anyone building a home or any construction, you know what, you know, the expenditures are doing. You go to the grocery store, you know what they're doing. Everything is rising, and that's why, you know, again, we're not spending any less money, it's just these parts are taking bigger pieces of the pie. All right, so bottom line is, we look at our cash balances, what we're going to do for the next five years. So unfortunately, you can see, this was last year, we're hoping to be good this year, but you can see it going down, okay? So what I want to look at was, all right, this forecast goes through '29. Let me project out another year. And exponentially, if I take what's happening, especially right here, what's going to happen in '30? All right? We're going to be in the negative in 2030. You can see the spend trend right here, just going down and down, unless something happens, okay? It's not a good picture. Now, the good thing is, at six years down the road, but it hits home for me now, the previous district I was at, when they were looking at stuff like this, someone said, you don't wait until the baby's born, or the night before the baby's born, to start building the nursery. You've got to start planning ahead of time. Same thing, yeah, we're six years down the road, but it's something we have to keep monitoring. And keep in mind that trend line right there. So let's go back to our levy cycle, okay? As we talk about our levy cycle, we've got the new one coming up in '27, one coming up in '30 that we talked about. So right about here, let's talk about what happens. Remember that trending line we had a second ago? Look what it's doing. You can see, right about here, when this levy is about due, that's where we're starting negative cash, not just negative spending in the hole. So it's something that we're going to have to look at. Again, we talked about renewing levies, combining levies, and at this time, 2029, '30, as of right now, that's probably when we're going to be talking about getting new money. Don't want to do it, but we have no choice, unless something drastic changes, unless we cut out a lot of expenses. So when you think about, all right, the last new money levy you had was 2018. If we can hold off to 2030, that's twelve years on that levy. Now, was it renewed? Yes. But we're still spending on that same dollar amount that we did in 2018. So we're about halfway, I'm sorry?
It was five years, right?
Yes, five years, and we renewed it for ten. But if we can go through twelve years of that without having to get additional money, you know, that's something we're hoping for, especially when you look at what levies have done in the local communities, it's about a thirty-three percent passage rate. Renewals aren't even going elsewhere. I mean, our community has been extremely supportive with our renewals. We're passing sixty, sixty-five percent. I know districts, one district had three renewals on only one pass in this county. And it's just some districts out there that have never had issues before are having trouble. So as we look at this, it's going to be something, because like I say, right here, we're looking at new money, and we've got a renewal coming up. So that's why I'm saying, it's time to start planning ahead and look at possibly combining things. So as you walk away, just things to think about, items for consideration, this again, the Merriman Valley Schumacher Master Plan. Potential increase in tax base, it's possible, not from the Akron side so much, because remember, Akron has the tax payments for fifteen years. So you get taxes on the property, but anything you build, you don't get it for fifteen years. In Cogga Falls, though, they don't have that, okay? They'll even do TIFs, where the tax money they would add go for the infrastructure to help with the roads and things like this. But what Cogga Falls does, what we call non-school TIFs. So even though they pass it, we still get tax money out of it. We're very appreciative of what they do. But the potential could be increasing our tax base through that. Not a ton, but there is that potential there. But the biggest concern is the potential increase in enrollment. In our elementary right now, we know it's busting at the seams. So that's something we really have to monitor, what's going to happen with this master plan. Potential legislation, a couple of different things here. Again, the next biennial budget, what's going to happen with the Fair School Funding Plan? What's going to happen with school funding? We just don't know yet. Right now, there is a Joint Committee for Property Tax Review. They're supposed to make a report by the end of December. What they're looking at is what they do with property taxes, because so many people in